Little sweater on, which is amazing.
I was gonna answer your.
Thanks, Molly.
Jeff, you do know it's not baseball season.
I don't, I've seen that, so I don't know.
Hey, pitchers and catchers, Cardinals report on the fifth.
In February?
Position players on the 12th, and the first game is the 25th.
And we don't care about preseason.
Oh, I love preseason.
It's cold, though, but I don't give a damn. Spring break, spring training. They're gonna, they're gonna.
Why are we, it's still football season, why are we talking about baseball?
Shut up.
I'm out here. I'll leave. I'm gonna go.
Are you saying you're going fishing?
Cowboys, Cowboys.
Exactly, I guess we are going baseball.
No, I'm not.
Hey, the Seahawks into football.
The beauty of being a Cowboys fan is Jeff, Jeff always knows he doesn't have to make any plans for January.
Am I supposed to be one?
Ready?
Are you a Chiefs fan?
No, I'm not, you just, you ready?
I am.
Actually, I'm ironic, I'm a Seahawks fan.
I am too, this weekend.
And unfortunately, I've been a two, like, I haven't even seen him.
I get a little run of the floor.
We had grill, this is.
I'm in jail.
I really don't have a dog.
Y'all ready? Y'all ready?
All right, call commissioner order, we have any minister reports, betting?
No.
All right, commissioner, committee liaisons on reports or announcements, upcoming meetings and/or events that we didn't cover yesterday? Then first item on the agenda is approval of the assessment maintenance plan as amended. Y'all saw the language?
Yes.
Very good?
Yep.
Entertaining a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion second, call roll, please.
Chris?
Yes.
All right. Yes.
You say me? Oh, I never heard it.
You second.
I didn't hear anything.
Jeff?
Jeff?
Yes?
Okay, a roll call vote, that's approved. Guys can each need to sign that, please. And that takes us to the other item on our agenda. Which is a discussion of the facilities, master planning, particularly the old jail area, sheriff's house, I don't know what we call that. The junk to the north of the building. So, Jeff is kind of the leader on this particular thing, so. You were the organizer of this particular project, so I'm gonna allow you to kind of floor. We asked Michael and Kerry to come up since they did all that work, is that like three years ago?
Two thousand nine.
Two thousand, wow, five years ago, they did all this work five years ago that we're now dusting off again. And we thought maybe they would run through that a little bit, I think we had one, one hard copy of it? You got it?
I, I got a copy that I made, Jeff had all, I returned all that other stuff to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
We started with moving Maryland, and then I think we need to look at an overall plan where we plan to go within, you know, the next couple of years, five years, even 20 years down the road, what do we want to do with the old jail? I mean, it's probably about time to start thinking about that. So, we had several plans that, would you have three different ones for us when y'all did this last time? And I think we just pride you, Frank, Chris, up to date, and see where we want to go with it. So.
But, what we did was we went whole.
So you need the microphone.
Kind of beginning of it, starting.
Yeah, could you grab a mic and talk if you don't mind, Kerry? Pull it off the base.
Sorry. We stream, so it's the only way anybody outside can hear what you're saying.
Be careful with my language. Is this on?
And stop Jeff.
Okay. We went back beginning of January of 2009, thought we'd just pull the, I'll go, it'll take me about 10 or 15 minutes to hit the highlights and then we can talk about whatever you want.
That's good. Because I, Chris wasn't here back then, he needs to be, bro.
I've kind of looked at some of the plans, so I mean, you know, I'm familiar with them, so.
All right, well, again, I'm just gonna skip across the surface and we can go back to anything you all want to, want to touch on. But this was from 2009. And what this drawing is, is from this line right here down is the courthouse, here's the elevator connector, and then this is the footprint of the old jail. The old jail is sitting there. And so we talked about what could be some of the long-term uses of that, that jail footprint. We talked about extending the courthouse corridor, which is here, up into the space. We talked about Sallyport on the, on the alley level, then upstairs, a secure access to the courthouse. Remember this was, we were still debating how to get in and out of the courthouse to secure it, at the time it was not secure. Future restrooms, here's that corridor extension on the second floor, and then everything to the east would be future space or shelled space. And then that just basically copied up per floor, extension of the main corridor of the courthouse to stairs, future space, restrooms, and then this over here was either gonna be offices or courtyards. And we did that template per floor. Did you flip the screen, Michael?
That's existing, Kerry.
Yeah, what, what we were doing simultaneous was, what if it, go back, Michael. What if it were a new building, roughly the footprint of the old jail, or what if we reused the existing footprint? So we were going back and forth between those two scenarios. So the next slide is, what if we used the old jail? And so again, you, you see a Sallyport here, you see a complete renovation, this is the vehicular Sallyport, complete renovation of the alley level, excuse me. And then you have inmate access here and vertical. The upper floors were gonna be left untouched at the time, but this, this, the price tag that was estimated here included a complete renovation of the alley level plus HVAC, new HVAC to drive the upper floors in the future. Okay, so it was a fairly big price tag because you were renovating the lower floor and you were doing HVAC for the upper floors and finishing that out as money was available. The biggest problem with the, with the courthouse and the jail reusing the existing is to look at the floor levels. Here's the basement of the courthouse, first, or second, third, and fourth floors. Here's the alley of the old jail. And you see these two floors pretty much straddle the second floor of the courthouse. The third floor lines up because when the jail was originally built, there was a skywalk. Inmates were brought across into the courthouse, there was no building here, this was open air, this was a skywalk. And then you can see the top floors are close to lining up with the roof of the jail. So that right there, that is the problem with using the existing structure with the courthouse, is that that floor is between two floors. Did you flip slides, Michael?
Yeah.
Okay.
Exit the circle, Mike, exit the circle, there you go. Hit that.
Okay. You didn't, you didn't, you didn't change slides.
There you go.
There we go, okay. This is more, this is more versions on that same idea, excuse me, where the upper floors would be left unfinished, you'd buy the HVAC for the whole building. This one was, we were at the time debating, what if we want a high bay vehicle for the Sallyport? And so this would be coming in at the northeast corner, but how do we get that high bay?
That's the bus concept.
Bus concept, so that, you can see there, we're proposing to take out half of the next floor up of the jail so we can get a high bay.
Yeah, we've already, we've moved on past that one, because what we did with the Sallyport.
Yeah, this one's no longer possible.
Right.
Okay, next. This one we can skip too, because this one was to line the second floors up with, this is a one-story addition of a Sallyport, but it was new construction to line these floors up, and then you could have future floors on top of it. This would be overbuilt to take future floors. That, that pretty much was gone when we renovated what's there today.
It's still not possible to line up the second floors in, or?
It is, it is, we'll get to that.
We had lots of options.
Yeah.
Too many.
When we get to F, we can stop talking.
We'll get to F, there you go, you get you an idea of what we're talking about.
Okay, jump to F.
Yeah. This is, this is using the existing shell, renovating the bottom floor. Let's see, what is this one?
This is still one of the options right here.
This could still be done.
The shells, but we don't line up the floors.
You don't line up the floors, but you renovate these upper floors, you do the HVAC now, you could still do part of this one. And you see this diagram up here is, is getting closer to what was actually built today. You see the Sallyport there, and you see pretty much reusing the existing footprint that's under here. Okay? We can't do this one anymore, this was new first floor, new second floor, floors lining up and going on, these were future floors, as you could do it. Can't do this one anymore. Okay, from that.
Let me ask a question in a quick period of review. I'm a little confused. We have the Sallyport done on the first floor. Can we tear everything above it off, off if we needed to?
Could you?
Keep the Sallyport as it exists, or a floor on top of it, if we'd like above it?
Yeah, what I would do, Mark, though, is, can you go backwards one, Michael? Yeah, what you're asking is, here's, here's the jail, the old jail, could we take everything from here off?
And kind of use that plan you've got there.
Right, right. Mark, what I would do is, I'd leave this slab in place, you could take these off, and you would build a new one.
You got this slab, and then you build a thicker slab.
Who gave him a laser pointer? Yeah, you build, you build a new floor right here to line up, so you would have a bit of an interstitial space there, but yes, you could do that.
I mean, there wouldn't be too much gap in between there, it doesn't look like, a little bit.
Half a floor.
Is it that much?
Yeah, well, here's your distance, Mark, right here.
Yeah, but you have poor footings and every, well, I don't know how you do that. Okay, I see. But, but that's still, that's a feasible, is that a feasible option right there?
Yes, and you could use that space for HVAC and all kinds of technology, oh yeah. Engineers would love it.
The only way to just keep the three floors, we have three floors. We've built three floors, three floors lined up, if they do on the third floor.
They only do on the third floor.
Right here's where they line up.
If you line up, if you line up the second floor, though.
Yeah, what you would, what you would effectively be doing is, you could leave, you could leave this building, take that floor out and, and repour it here. You with me? So you, you could leave the third floor instead of ripping everything off.
No, what I'm saying is keep three floors instead of losing a floor, because that plan there, you lose a floor.
That's, that's correct, that's correct, if you line them up.
You can also take this to a fourth floor.
Right.
Right here. So you have three floors, because if you're tearing all this off, if you're tearing all this off, you're building that up, you can build a fourth floor.
I don't think this is, is this keep a shell or not keep a shell? That's building it within the.
That's within the shell.
Yeah. Now, if you're talking about just taking everything off the top of that.
That's what I was thinking, what if you take everything off the top?
What's, what's the most?
Why don't you let me get through the 10 minute?
Okay.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
You know how we're shorty out there, guys? That's never changed, Kerry.
Kerry, if you got a plan, go ahead.
Don't. I'm just trying to bring everybody to speed, next.
You've got four and a half minutes, if I have to, it'll be your.
Okay. Everybody stood on that from January to November of 2009, this was in November of 2009, we started looking real hard at reusing just the footprint that was there. This was a drive-through Sallyport with renovation here, next. This was the same plan with a new building, okay, so basically you're gaining this corner, you can see that the interior function is better, and you have the drive-through all the way through this way, next. This is B of November of 2009, again, this is Sallyport over here, renovating here within the existing, notice the shape, that's the existing shell of the building. Next is that same plan, what do we do if we build it as a new footprint, a one-story building, and then we, we had a choice here of Sallyport access on two sides, next. This was B2 that somebody asked to see, oh, what it is, it's a minimum amount of holding cells with future capacity to grow into holding cells over here. So it was basically half the holding cells of the previous plan, trying to cut the number down, the cost down. This was, this was another one, this was B.3, again, this was still November of 2009. We then went and looked, and I'm gonna fly through these, because a lot of them aren't relevant, but this was a scan of the, it's not very readable here, but of the existing sheriff's residence and courthouse. And so we started looking at what could a building look like next there, and some people wanted it to contrast, just flip through these, some people wanted it to, to be compatible with the building. Some showed a new building, some showed leaving the facade of the sheriff's residence with a new building, basically just the front wall would remain, new building behind it, these are just five-minute sketches. This is starting to play off the windows of the courthouse over here, but, and there was still an ongoing debate whether just, this would just look like an annex, or whether we would leave that sheriff's residence facade on there, but notice that this is moving around in different places in these different schemes. And there were budgets for every one of these. Flip through these. Okay, this, this goes to this is February of 10, this is February of 10, again, with the Sallyport over here, and identifying this as the secure access to the courthouse, sidewalk entryway into here, and this is where the metal detectors and all that would be. And this just showed the upper floor, it's similar to a plan we saw the previous year where we have future space, i.e. offices or courtrooms, and then your support services with inmate movement, restrooms, and stairs here. The, the problem with this one is, it's less expensive, but we have this, this corridor, we do have a conflict with public and inmates here, if you ever took the inmates down this hall, or you could dump them directly into the courtroom. Same template going on up, we were also simultaneously looking at renovations of restrooms, this works, this works all now complete. Same thing, more restroom renovation with the same template with future space right there.
You could flip that.
Yeah, that, keep going.
We get that picture. It would still affect, it would be building, it would pop the four floors, so we could use. Hold that for, for, you know, work that, work that.
Next is, let, flip through these. Oh, this was, direction, come back and make this look like it was really built along with the courthouse. So again, new building, so you can see that the, the red line here is the floor levels of the courthouse, they're line, obviously you can line those up in new construction. This is just more, flip through these pretty quick. We were asked to show what, what it would look like as an attachment to the courthouse, and I think there's some perspectives after this. There's some perspectives of what it could be. Next. This was the project we have today, studying, getting a Sallyport in here, real critical on the height here, and the type of vehicle we can put, flip through this. Turning radiuses off the alley to make sure it would get something in there barely. And then this is just the construction documents to get to what we have today. So, I guess where you are now is seeing if there are pieces and parts of before, what are your options to move forward based on what you have there today?
Okay. Thank you for getting this up to speed. Jeff? He's our chairman of the Building and Planning Subcommittee of the County Commission.
Chairman of Committee of One?
No, the only thing worse than that was being a department chair. You have to keep something, you haven't banned it.
I got one simple question.
Yes, sir.
Is it cheaper to tear the top three floors off and build new than try to maintain the integrity of the architecture of the courthouse? Or is it gonna be cheaper to try to align the floors and keep the existing shell?
Wow. Align the floors and keep the, Michael, you can chime in here if you think a better answer.
You can't align all the floors and keep the existing shell from the mountains.
Well, you, yeah, you could, you'd take two floors and condense them to one, you'd lose a floor.
That's right, there you're gonna lose a floor, though, so.
Yeah, so you're only, so you wouldn't gain three more floors if you did that?
No.
I think in my, in my mind, we need three floors there, three additional floors, if we're gonna do it.
If you use the existing building, the existing building, the only way it makes sense, I see to do it, is to lose a floor, which I think hurts us long-term because it costs us a lot of space and will potentially.
Yes, to use the existing, excuse me, to use the existing shell and align the floors, you lose an entire floor.
So, you know, my, my preference would be, from a space perspective, either lose the floor, and I think it's critical we line the floors up, I think that's critical. So, in my mind, that's the most critical portion of any kind of work we're doing, is lining it up so that all the space is useful. And all this, we don't have to have steps going up and down for everybody going from one side to the other. So it's either lose a floor, or tear it down and build up, and build a three, a new three floors to your, to your three floor. Eric?
What about just getting rid of that extra floor, like, what has been said, and then just add an additional fourth floor on top of the existing building?
I don't think the existing building can carry another floor, can it?
Yeah, that, that's another advantage of taking off and putting back, is it's a concrete building, it's, you know, it's built like an old jail, imagine that, but the floors are concrete and poured and integral into the wall, so it's, it's built hell, hell for stout. If you take off, you know, keep in mind, we're depending on that lower floor, walls, footings, foundations, if you take off, we can go back with steel construction, it's, it would be an office occupancy, it wouldn't be jail occupancy or courtroom. So, in theory, we could lighten up the construction going up, that's a very broad brush picture, I don't think, I mean, we, we could analyze it, but my hunch is, there's no structural engineer in his right mind that's going to sign off on another floor onto that building as meeting, meeting current codes.
The other thing too, is when we were doing the construction, the cutting of the doors for the Sallyport, we found that the original drawings that we did have were not the same as actually how it was constructed. So there was a lot of, the structural engineer had to come in and, and come up with some details once they started doing some of that work, so I think the structural engineer would be a little reluctant to rely on, without doing a lot of investigation.
So tearing it, tearing down off the, and going up is probably the safest, from a structural engineering perspective, way to get three floors to match.
Yes, yes. That's your most optimistic approach to, to achieve what you want.
Where are we at with historical? Is that part of the, what are we getting the medallions for?
That has no bearing, the nickel doesn't have any bearing, that's just aspirational stuff. The bigger issue is, if we took any federal money back in the seventies for the windows, which we did, that requires us to keep the courthouse in its historic state.
Right.
We did not, we did not take any, we did not take any money in the seventies to do sheriff's office, she, the sheriff's house, or jail, only did the windows of the courthouse.
One other item, one other.
We would have to do a, we would have to make sure we don't jeopardize the courthouse itself, but we're not talking about invading that space, so.
One other item that will complicate it for you is to leave the shell and go from two floors to one on the second floor. Those floors relate to the windows that are in the building, so suddenly you'll have a floor between, it'll make absolutely no sense where those windows are, so you'll, we'll have to decide whether we try to retrofit the facade, which would be a nightmare, to move windows to where they make sense to be, or we simply have space with no windows. Or they're in really weird places like at your ankles or at the ceiling.
In light of the condition of the Carnegie Building, I'm for moving this forward because I'm not willing to spend any money on the Carnegie Building.
I agree entirely with that.
Jeff?
Well, it all started just moving Maryland downstairs and the treasure.
But I think we've needed another courtroom for quite some time, and there's some security issues with getting inmates into the courtroom, and at least Donnie has expressed concerns over that, and.
I don't disagree with that, the need for a courtroom, they were using this for the courtroom the last week.
It's been used more and more for courtroom now.
But the question is, do we keep the shell, or do we knock it down?
My vote is to knock it down.
And that seems to be, from a space perspective, the best way to go.
I think we need three floors.
The question becomes cost. Whether we like it or not, that's a factor. And I, I don't, I can't read the numbers up there anymore.
Well, and I think we need to go back and, and update these, for, you know, they were five years ago, and they're not quite the scenario you're talking now, we could, pretty short.
As I recall, there's a lot of money in the, in all of these, in working on the main, the Sallyport level floor, it was a lot of the cost initially.
That's correct, keep in mind, keep in mind, we were setting it up for future occupancy of upper floors, so there was HVAC.
That was a big cost.
For the, yes, it was, it was doubling the cost.
How much is the HVAC? I can't read it up there.
Oh, I'm guessing, Mark, it was at least a half a million dollars.
Hey, Michael, is that all on one file that you can email to us?
Um, yeah.
I don't know if the server will take a file with the size.
Yeah, I don't know what the size is. Is it on that zip? We just download it directly onto the server?
We weren't even to that level of detail. We were gonna say we're gonna make the capacity for the.
I have a folder for us, and we can all look at it.
I'm just still leaning towards keeping the shell and the three floors above the Sallyport.
And not matching up?
But, no. Not losing a floor, I think it's gonna be more important to have the space than it is to.
Keep in mind, the upper floors, ceiling heights are really low, on that, what would be the third floor?
No, then, you don't know.
And how, how do you, how do you get people to those areas, is my question?
You got two floors that have lined up already, so you got that third floor.
So then middle floor becomes what, the staircase? Middle two floors that don't line up? You go into, so you go, so if I wanna go.
Four steps everywhere to go.
No, I understand, but if I wanna go here, okay, to that floor, I gotta go in, up to this floor, over into here, and then down to this floor, right? Yes.
Well, how else do you get to that floor?
Well. Through the, through the. The only other way is to go through the secure jail facility up to that floor, which doesn't work.
You'd either have to go through the bottom and then up, or you'd have to go up and then just down, it's, we need some more exercise anyway.
But if you take it out, if you take it out, then you can just go right in. You're also gonna have an accessibility issue if you don't plant an elevator. And I would love to be able to move that security away from the basement and put it on a street-level access, so we can have all the handicap access and regular traffic access coming through one point, instead of having to use a bell at the elevator to show off if you're handicapped. And, and they, they had that planned in there, using, what was my old office, coming through there. Which is the problem.
I see what you're trying to do with keeping the shell and the three floors, but when I look at all those cells that would have to come out through there, and, and you guys may correct me, but, I mean, I would think that those cells were probably cast in place and may support some of that floor.
No, there's a.
And welded in.
Right, Chris, right here.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, right here, there's a center row of columns and beams.
Mm-hmm.
Right in the center, so there's columns right here.
And bottom line, it's gonna come down to the price tag on, on both of them. If the idea I got is just gonna cost a lot more and not make any sense, then my mind can be changed real quick.
Well, I mean, here's what it comes down to.
I opposed to doing it.
It's, I, I mean, I think, I hate doing this, because I think we need to go back and update and come up with, it sounds to me like what we're talking about is two options. New building, matching for the two, three, and four, so basically a three-story addition onto the existing Sallyport. Or fixing the existing building, keeping the three floors, and keeping the three floors, recognizing that they won't steer up, and figuring out some way to allow some, some kind of traffic flow.
Stair, stair.
Stair, elevator, whatever, somehow we have to have the ability to access those floors.
Yeah, well, I would say that, that probably helps you all too, with the, with the, two, instead of, I mean, you went through the alphabet, one's sure ready.
Right.
But.
And then that all.
New building, matching four, the two, three, and four, so basically a three-story addition onto the existing Sallyport. Or fixing the existing building, keeping the three floors, and keeping the three floors, recognizing that they won't steer up, and figuring out some way to allow some, some kind of traffic flow.
Stair, stair.
Stair, elevator, whatever. Somehow we have to have the ability to access those floors.
Yeah, well, I would say that, that probably helps you all too, with the room seven, two, instead of, I mean, you went through the alphabet, one's ready, you can do this, so.
And then that alphabet, you know, and, and I think that-
And, and the alphabet took a while, I mean, we would come and present, and then some other options were asked.
But I don't think we wanna, I, I think those two options are relatively generic-
Yep.
If that makes sense.
Mm.
And then we just need estimated costs-
Right.
For each of those two options, uh, you know, for Jeff's option, for lack of a better term, you know, obviously there's gonna be an elevator, or stairs, or both, that'll have to be planned in because you gotta figure out the access, um, so, you know, that's, that's the factor that you all have to figure out.
Yep.
The best way to do that is, the other thing that I think we need to see is how we get maximum usable space out of those floors. Particularly, from our perspective, if you tear down and you build new.
What do we want to put over there, though?
Well-
We've talked about moving the public defender possibly over there.
Some of those, some of those plans show a lot of bathrooms and a lot of other stuff, for lack of a better term, taking up a fair amount of floor space.
That's correct.
I'd like, I mean, if we're gonna do this, the purpose of doing this is primarily space, usable space. And, you know, we've gone through and retrofitted and done a lot of work on a lot of the bathrooms already in the building, so I'm more concerned about finding sufficient space than amenities.
Office or courtroom?
I think one courtroom and, and then the remaining office.
Okay.
And, I mean, if we can line up the floors, I would say that couldn't we use existing facilities or bathrooms from the other floors?
Yes.
And, and I think the, the jail itself is plumb for some facilities.
Or minimal facilities.
If you can't line up, so Jeff's plan, you're gonna have to factor bathrooms into at least, the floors that you can't get easily in, as the last one we had, you have to have one, those sort that you can walk in there, just in case you couldn't hold it.
But to your, your thought, who are we gonna put over there? Well, we got a courtroom, we got prosecutor, we got, um, public defender.
We see the space shut, nobody likes to move, what's that? And we're running that with Marilyn's too, we talked about moving her over to the old commission, then putting Dale over there, putting Marilyn over on hers, and then we went back to putting Marilyn back over here. Now Marilyn still would like to be over here, so, it's like a dog chasing its tail. I'm just hoping we catch it here pretty soon. And I don't know where, nobody wants to move, we try to get the, I would love to get the assessor in the same building as the collector.
I agree.
We've all agreed on that, but where we're gonna put him, we don't have anybody, you know, the prosecutor don't wanna move. We talked about possibly putting him over in the law enforcement center, you know, that's law enforcement, but he doesn't wanna move over there, so do we put him over there then, in the courthouse, or?
Well, the way I see it, we've got two extra floors over there, I mean, that's gonna be a lot of space.
Uh, the way I see it is this, it's gonna sound really bad, and I don't care. We're the landlords, and we pick who, where people get space. In the end, it's not Mark Richardson's job to say, "I'm not gonna move to this space or that space." It's our job, because the law says we have to provide space for him. It doesn't say where we have to provide the space. If we, if we choose that to maximize use of our facilities, that he moves to the third floor of the courthouse, or he moves to the bottom of the jail, that's our decision, not his. I agree, we should try to work together and come up with a plan where we can all sit down and figure it out, but we can't allow desires of people to say, "I don't wanna move," or "I don't like this option," or "I don't like that option," to jeopardize the entire master concept of how we use our building spaces.
That's where I wanted to go, is where we're gonna be at twenty years, and I venture to say that possibly none of us will be here in twenty years, so.
Well, I guarantee I won't be sitting here in twenty years, I won't be sitting here in twenty months. Have you come in so we can- Three hundred and thirty-seven days, fourteen hours, and less than a minute. Thank you.
But we got, we, we need a courtroom over there, is the one thing, and then we'd have the other two floors. And if we can move the prosecutor over there, or-
Recorder.
Yeah, the recorder, um, we gotta get the assessor and a public defender out of the car keys.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's kinda where the discussion led to coming from, moving you all downstairs. So we're gonna get them another jury room, come to your office, and then, Eric, I guess we weren't in a big hurry to move yours down there until we figured out the rest of the plan.
I hope not, because I've got security issues with money down in the basement, right in front of the people coming and going. We can talk about that later, but.
So, what are we gonna do?
We have to get, get numbers, I'm saying.
Yeah.
I've never made a facilities master plan before, so.
I don't think any of us have done a facilities-
That's where I'm kinda figuring out, you know, which one's a cart, which one's a horse, which one we gotta put in front of the other one, and do we work on, do we decide what we're gonna do within jail, and then that gives us more direction?
I think we owe you an, an update on taking all this to go to two scenarios. What, what's the best we can do with the existing floors? And how does that compare to only the Sallyport staying existing and everything above it new?
Well, I think that'd be a good idea, and my other intention, I think we agreed, the last time we had the meeting, was to have the elected officials and everybody that's in here, or in the game, to have a say in it, to get some feedback and, you know, try to formulate a plan. And like I said, if it's for the next five years or twenty years, we need to have some kind of idea of where we're going with it, so.
Once we have, once we have his initial, Carrie and Michael, you're all's initial plans for the, that space, I think one of the things we can do, and it's gonna sound weird, but is, lay all the plans for all the floors of the buildings we're talking about on a table. So we have three floors in this building laid on a table, we'll have four floors in the courthouse, three floors, the Sallyport's the Sallyport, that's not gonna change, three floors in the jail, and then whatever you got over in the new jail, Greg, the one floor, the shell, to lay that space out, and then have all the elected officials come over and look at it, and start figuring out where does this match up best?
We, we probably have a matrix in our office or can get it, where we have the total square footage of all those departments, because you're gonna be looking at chunks of space-
Right.
This building, the courthouse, and that, and see how those total departments compare to what's available.
And some of that space has limitations on it. For example, the jail can only have law enforcement-related personnel in it, period. So we can't put the treasurer in the jail, unless you do something wrong.
You're talking about the law enforcement center over there?
The law enforcement center. He, he can't be over there. I mean, he can be in the new space over here, but he can't be in that one, because that one's statutorily restricted. Conversely, we, we can put the prosecutor over there. So, that, those are all space issues we have to figure out.
Yeah, you're gonna have one scenario, and you have to-
And by the way, just for, to address, um, when we talked about moving the prosecutor to, two years ago? What did we talk, were you up here for that or not? At least two years ago, we talked about moving the prosecutor to the basement of the jail, and he was very opposed to it, remember his excuse, his rationale was having to carry the files back and forth? As of April twenty-eighth, the courts are going paperless. There'll be no more files.
All right, more cops on the way down.
So it's all computerized, which means you don't have to worry about bringing files anymore, it's all gonna be computerized. And that, that changes the dynamic too.
Kinda like, wait, what, paperless, you're gonna do?
Yeah, I see that.
We're, we're doing better.
We are doing better, I agree. We killed pure trees this year. Yes, sir.
Since you're all are moving, I got, for this building, and you're gonna move the prosecutor, I have a great idea. Where you wanna go? I wanna go downstairs, I think the collector, the clerk's office should go downstairs, because there'd be enough room, and it's also on the ground, that we could bring our, our machines over here and store them, and the commissioners could stay on this floor, and the recorder and collector could go to the third.
Then help us with the assessor, though. We need the assessor and the collector to be in the same building. That's the cr-
The assessor.
That's the critical thing, is the collector and assessor in the same building, because they have so much interaction, the, the public has so much interaction back and forth between those two.
That you could have that section over there? That, this building price just went down too, I think.
This is the reason we need to lay everything out on the table and start figuring out planning space.
That's what I'm saying, because we're paying, we're paying beaucoup bucks for across the street over there, and, uh, it is not gonna be too far off, the collector's not gonna have, or my, I'm not gonna have that money to pay for that across the street. Then the commissioners are gonna have to start paying, so.
We'll figure it out.
That's what I'm saying, it'd be, it'd be a situation where we could bring everything back across the street.
And I guarantee, no offense intended, Marvin, that every other elected official would say, "Well, I need a lot more space too." And the next thing we know, the next thing we know, we'll be sitting down with thirty thousand feet of space with twenty-five thousand that we're using currently.
How, you want to bring, you know, you want to bring those machines across the street?
I don't care if they're across the street or not. You care if they're across the street.
I do, yeah.
Chris does.
Why do you care?
Why, why are we paying for storage?
Because we don't have it on site.
We got, we got a huge law enforcement center over there, that we got all kinds of, yeah.
Yeah, law enforcement center's that little issue. Statutory restricted the law enforcement purposes only.
How much room do you need for those? I've never seen how much room we got over there, do we got room?
I haven't been in that.
I got three rooms over there.
This is way beyond what we wanna be talking about today.
I just make the suggestion, were you stuck, who do you think? Oh, I don't know, it's all kinds of stuff. I'm not gonna be here. We're just gonna run it in like one hour.
But, but I mean, that's way beyond the scope, because I think what the initial scope is, is first let's get some initial designs on this, and then let's lay all the paper out and start figuring out what we can and what we can't do.
Well, so with Carrie and Michael, we've given them direction, they've done enough, y'all, so y'all-
How long do you need?
We can-
That's the real question.
Give us next week and meet the week after?
Okay, a couple weeks.
Okay, that's the week of the, yeah, week, week of the eleventh, who we got that week?
We have something on the fifth, or the twelfth, I think.
Well, we got C-CAM, I just assumed you'd be here for.
C-CAM's the twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth, which-
We have to go to that though, don't we?
What about the morning of the twelfth?
Could check in.
We don't have any, you know, C-CAM starts at two o'clock, one o'clock, two o'clock in the afternoon, isn't that right?
I don't know, I got, I got-
Check-in starts-
Two different times on my calendar.
Check-in starts at eleven AM, but I don't think the actual sessions start till one or two. So we could do the morning of the twelfth, or is that a holiday?
I don't know, the eleventh, the tenth is.
The tenth is?
President's Day is, uh-
The seventeen.
Seventeen, it's President's Day?
Yeah, but what about, what about Lincoln's birthday? We don't do that one anymore?
President's Day, now, we'll put it on break, does that-
The state does.
The Illinois one.
We took away Lincoln's birthday?
No, we made Lincoln's and Washington's birthday in one day, President's Day.
Does that your idea?
Yeah, that was his idea.
I'd rather have Lincoln's birthday.
Well, we can change it, just make President's Day-
We can get rid of Martin Luther King Day, we can have Lincoln's birthday.
We have President's Day and, um-
And Martin Luther, and, and Lincoln's birthday and not Martin Luther King Day.
We can just call it a floating holiday, you can take it whatever, you want.
See how these things degenerate? We could do the morning, can you guys do the morning of the twelfth? Nine AM, nothing else on the agenda?
It's fine.
Good?
Yeah. Okay, I'll get it set up.
So we're just gonna talk about the jail then, or when do we, so we'll get that, the old jail, we'll get that drawing, and then the next step will be kinda-
Get that drawing, you can walk us through that drawing.
Two things with some cost estimates?
Yes, sir.
And we will need to have a discussion at that point, because that'll, that'll give us a cost estimate, and we've just got to make a decision what we can and can't do.
Yeah, and I'm, I mean, I'm, you all can go if you want, yeah, I wanna get down into Weezer, and what else, we've got stored that we need to look at too while we're doing this, I mean, it's not a bad idea, but maybe today's not the time.
Carnegie Building, if we're gonna invest any money in the Carnegie Building, the only thing I would invest is maybe securing it from the outside, so the rain doesn't get in, and letting it be a storage shed. That solves your problem, that solves the file problem, that solves your problem, and we just make it a big storage shed.
What do we gotta do with the roof on it? Do we have to do slate? Do you know what that is?
We can either do, if that's a historical building, we'll have to keep it as a store. But there is a new slate, that's a synthetic slate that's out on the market, which is one of the options I gave you.
It's seven thousand dollars cheaper.
Yeah. Now, I don't know-
That'd be some plastic, look.
How many squares are up on that roof?
I don't remember how many squares, uh, every day we try to get up there, it's been to go to Williams, when it's raining.
We just put, for all I care, you just throw black shingles up there.
I, I'm gonna agree with you, they've got an architect's shingle that looks like slate. It's, I think it's around a hundred bucks a square, roughly, a hundred and thirty a square.
I'm, I vote sell it, or give it away.
Give it to us today.
But we're gonna, I mean, I don't disagree with Jeff, however, we are gonna have storage, we do need to look at the storage.
Well, yeah, but I mean, we're talking about adding three floors over there, I mean, I, I think we got space. I just think we need to, to use it, I mean, if we do something like that.
Service and everything else we're keeping up here, Marvin needs, you know, he's brought up about breaking his machine, be a good place to store them over there. The building's not in that bad shape, okay?
Are you gonna get rid of all the heat and all the water and everything out of it?
Uh, right now, the HVAC is in great shape over there.
Yeah, but it's a utility bill, I mean, it's an expense, I mean, it's, it's a direct expense. I mean, why are we gonna maintain another building? We talked about having to re-tuck point it and do all that stuff, another a hundred thousand dollars.
But it's gonna be less than rent.
Hundred thousand dollars, hell, you could rent all kinds of space for a long time for a hundred thousand dollars.
We're paying for you to do it, and why are we worried about moving in?
And seven, eight hundred dollars a month, isn't it, or, isn't it, Marvin?
About seventy, about right at eight, close to eight thousand dollars a year. How much room you got? Well, there's, I've got two, two nice sized rooms, and then I've got a small room which can, for storage of, of, of machines and, and, uh, privacy panels and signs and everything. And, but, but we need, you gotta remember, we need at least someplace where we can use a ramp to get in and out of the trash, to load it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay, is that the zip, you put on that zip drive? Hang on, I might have a zip drive. Let me grab a zip drive, and you can just dump it right there.
I mean, we're basically only talking about the, you know, we're gonna move some space around, but we're talking about adding a courtroom, we're talking about moving the assessor and the public defender. That is not that many people and that much space. I mean, we're gonna have two full, two and a half full floors over there. I, I'd see that we have plenty of space now, it may not leave a lot, a whole lot of future space, but we still have got space in the bottom of the courthouse too, so.
I think we need to take a look at it, when they get it drawn up, and I think we may be surprised how much space they're gonna take up with, uh, moving the public defender over there, if that's where we go with them. Do we move the prosecutor over there, so we can get the assessor in this building? So.
And that, maybe something that we have to move.
Nobody's already got enough for everyone.
Thousand three sixty-one K.
I think we'll take a look at it. Good. How much of that other room over there, Greg, do y'all have used right now for, uh, sheriff on, uh, and interstitial and, you know?
There's one right next to that zip. Oh, it doesn't?
Like for weight room, or, you know, that y'all are using, because we're just kinda had down there as empty space.
What we're using in that place is you were talking about with the prosecutor. In the section we've got, we moved our weight room from where the analyst is using it for a day room now. We've also got our airsoft chute house and our wrestling mats, and some storage, that's like a pile of storage in our storage room, plus the custodians have their own area.
I don't disagree, I mean, we need to take a look at all of it, but, uh, it'll probably have some future space. I mean, 'cause, you know, even though I think we, none of us wanna see more personnel added, or more expense, I mean, I think it's inevitable that, uh, that will happen, so.
Well, looking at the emergency services building, I, that's why I was wondering how much room you had there, Marvin? Like, you know, put the, the voting machines and stuff over there. Well, with any luck at all, within the next year, I think you're gonna see one of those machines be gone, and, and they'll all be- Well, with any luck at all, within the next year, I think you're gonna see one of those machines be gone, and, and they'll all be in one, so, you know, we're gonna.
We don't know where we're at.
We're most probably not gonna have to have all the space we got across the street next year or so, but, because we're gonna have to buy new machines, it's getting to that point. And then when the new machines come out, they're all in one. Well, the Carnegie building's gonna be a cash cow anyway, as long as we have it, but if we need it for space, then we've got it, but.
How far down the road, Marvin, do you think it'll be before we be voting on an iPad or whatnot?
Oh, I don't think you're gonna see you have the iPad, but you're gonna see, uh, the new, the machines, I would say, in the next year. They're, because you have to have the handicap machines, and we have, we got, right now, we got two machines, one for the handicap, one for the, uh, regular, it's optical scan, just the optical scan, and the, uh, DRE, it's all gonna be one machine, so it'll take up less room.
So if I understand what you're saying, if you moved the public defender up, up above the detention area, and you moved the prosecutor's office up above them, and you moved the courtroom up above that, and the assessor to where the prosecutor and auditor are now, is that one of, one of the options you're looking for, is if you?
That is a possible, a possible option. I don't know how much space is on those floors. I don't know if you can put the prosecutor over there on one floor. You may take two floors.
Right.
You know, I just don't know space-wise. Until we lay this stuff out and we figure out what people are using for space and what they need, it's really hard to.
Or they could, I mean, the prosecutor could have some people over here, and maybe some people in the law enforcement center. I mean, the people that maybe aren't going back and forth over here every day.
So we have, we have space in the law enforcement center to put the prosecutor, and we're legally allowed to do that.
Right.
We have space in the law enforcement center to put lots of stuff, but I'm not sure we're legally allowed to put it over there. And, you know, maybe there, maybe there's a way to work it, maybe there's not, but for the time being, I think that's, we just, we need to get their plans, we need to get their plans, we need to lay everything out with the space and figure out how much space you need. I mean, I don't know how many, I use Marvin as an example. Marvin, you got X number of square feet over here, and then you got X number of square feet over there. So you need Y number of square feet, X plus X, you know, I mean, that's how much square feet you need. Um, you know, do you need more space over here? You need, you know, I mean, it seems like you guys fit in fairly well to the space of the office. I'm not sure the configuration's great, but the space seems sufficient. But then you got the storage issue. So, you know, some of that's looking at that. That office, because the way it's all broken up is, has that hallway and.
Hello, sir? You can't even see Annie back there. You go, she's back there. I mean, you basically.
And you got the kitchen break area back there, and yet we have one over here, too. I mean, it's like, why do we have multiples of everything? And, and right now, there's no reason to tear that stuff out, but if we're looking at repurposing all the space, maybe that, that's an extra office, you know?
Well, you got, you basically got two extra offices over there, because you got what we call the election room.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah. Yes?
Are we done, or?
I think we're about, I think, I think the meeting's breaking down into its, uh.
There you go.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, guys. If we, if, if you all just talk to me, that we, really, all we have to do in the intersection, or we're just, two by fours, I'm sorry, we live in, right outside, you know, there's a lot of stuff that we have in that area now there.
Should be a good solution. The, moving the prosecutor to the access off of Adams Street in that shelf space is ideal. And I recognize that the prosecutor has his issues with it, but it is an ideal piece of shelf space.
Well, then there's enough space there if you have two tiers in there for his office, and the period, how's it gonna do it?
Does, does child support, them have to be with the prosecutor?
And I don't even know that they, I think they have to keep their staff separate, because Holly's on a specific grant, and her staff can't do any work for Mark's office.
Which makes it simple.
Yeah, which changes the space, and that's that, she has that second level.
That's why they're on that second level.
Thanks, Kerry. Thank you, Michael. We really appreciate you guys coming over.
There's a lot, well, there's a lot of room upstairs.
See you in two weeks.
Yeah, that's kinda what we're, we're getting it, because that they take up a lot of room up there. Well, yeah, they use all our. When we move them over to there, he could use all the room we put in there. Well, I know they already have the office, too.
Yeah. We didn't talk about moving him, we didn't move him.
There's, there, there is room, if they just have one floor of the prosecutor's office, I'm very good at spatial, but here, we'll stop to.